Town Prescott Valley Work Study Meeting, July 18th, 2019. Call the order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palguta?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
And Councilmember Schumacher?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's just jump into item three, Discussion and Councilmember Vacancy. Mr. Tarkowski.
The mayor and council, when you just had the roll called, there were only six names. Okay, and there's a reason for that. As you are all very much aware, Councilwoman Mary Mallory has resigned. In your packet, you have her letter of resignation. She did it with mixed emotions, as you are all aware. She's very happy and proud that she has been appointed to the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors for District Five, which essentially is Prescott Valley. There are some areas on the fringes that are still Yavapai County unincorporated areas, but for the most part, of the five districts that were created eight years ago for redistricting, we, Prescott Valley, have the luxury of having most of the community, the notable exception Stone Ridge and Quailwood, that are not in District Five. So having said that, hats off to Ms. Mallory and congratulations on that. And now we need to begin a process that we are very familiar with, to go ahead and replace Mary with a new person that you appoint. And so with that, Diane will go ahead and share with you the schedule that she has put together, and that is for your consideration, and we need some questions and direction from you as to how you want to approach this and essentially the timeframe. So with that, Diane.
Yes, Mayor and council, I've given you two proposals here. One is, the first proposal is the expedited proposal, and the second one is drawn out a little bit longer. And the reason that it is drawn out a bit longer is to give you a little more time because you have two back-to-back meetings that are not going to happen. One at the end of this, the next month, and also the league meeting that you will be gone. So in looking at the first proposal, it is quite quick. I would start with the advertising for just one week as opposed to two weeks, and then we'd move directly into the presentations, at which time then you could create a short list of applicants that you wish to interview. We'd do the interview the following week, and then you could do the oath of office and seating of the new council member by September the 5th. Again, that is an expedited one. I prefer to take a look at proposal two, which gives you a little bit more thinking time and consideration of the applicants that you are going to receive. We would begin on the same date. However, I would advertise for applicants over two weeks as opposed to one, and that gives more people the opportunity to see that we do have a vacancy and if they're interested to put in an application for it. That also then slows down when the applications would be due, which would be August the 9th, and then the following work study, you could do the, listen to all of their presentations, and then create your short list again. And then the following week, we could do, well, not the following week, but three weeks later, after we get past the two weeks in a row that we don't have meetings, on September the 5th, you could go ahead and do your individual interviews of the shortlist applicants that are left, and then we'd follow that up with the appointment, and then this following meeting, do a seating of the council member. Again, it is your choice as to which proposal you like. This is, both of these are the quickest ways that we can do this, given the laws that we have to adhere to.
I'll start off. In my opinion, obviously, I don't speak for the rest of us, but my thoughts on it is, the longer we take, the better it is for the process. Gives more people an opportunity to think about it, gives us an opportunity to think about it, and I think rushing into something isn't, it's not really worth the risk reward there. So that's my thoughts in regards to which one we should go with. I think longer is better, at least in this, because it is an important decision, and it's not something we should take lightly.
Agree.
I would just like to agree, and I would give you a point of fact, because I'm literally starting my 17 years doing this. We've had this experience, and one time we did the short and we regretted it. And it just, it's logical and very good planning to do the second opportunity, from my point of view.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead.
That's all right. You know, we're at a position, it's a unique position really for us, because we've already completed our budget process. The budget's in place now for the next year. There are no major issues that we need to decide over the next 30 days. There's no legitimate reason why we need the seventh person sitting on the dais right now. There's no reason to rush into it. So I certainly believe we should take our time, because we can get a much broader list of candidates, and I think people should have more time to, to be able to take more time to put in applications for it. I'd like to see 15 people standing up here with applications, if we can do it. You know, we've got a broad list of qualified people in our town that can certainly come up here, and I'd like to see somebody apply for this position who has an intention of running for that position in 18 months. You know, we're going to be pulling packets. Those people that are running will be pulling packets in six months. So, you know, it's coming up on it. So, you know, I'd like to see a good, strong turnout for people that are interested in being on this council. And I think that if we take our time, we're going to find a better choice, and more people will pop up, and I think that's a good thing.
Absolutely.
And just for clarification, for the appointment, what, how long would the appointment be for, for what dates?
The appointment would be to the end of Mary Mallory's term, which will be up to the election in 2020.
November of 2020?
Yep.
And Diane, if you would, run through the schedule for the election. When will packets be available for anybody interested in the election as opposed to the appointment?
Packages will be available right after the first of the year. As you are aware, or maybe you're not aware, the legislature has changed some of the rules again, so I've had to revise our calendar as far as council elections. We're on top of it right now, it's done, but packets will be available after the first of the year.
And that means that they have to be returned no later than mid-May, roughly? Or is it April?
Actually, that has changed as well, so I can't give you the specific date right now, looking at this particular calendar, but about 150 days to 120 days prior to the election is when those packets have to be back in. So it gives them several months.
Okay, and that would be for an early August primary?
That's correct.
And then if it needs to go to runoff, that would happen in November, and those people would be seated the first of January of 2020?
21.
2021, that's, that is correct.
21.
Right, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
So it would appear, Marty and, how do you guys feel about the schedule?
Oh, I prefer the longer schedule. As Rick said, there's no urgent business that's going to come before us that needs somebody to be here to, you know, make it an odd vote. I would also like to throw out there, I had written a letter to the editor a couple of years ago, prior to the last election, regarding what the requirements are, and, you know, it's not just showing up on a Thursday night. So I have the letter here, if you want to hear it, but if not, I could give, I could give a copy to Diane and let her, so that when you do post it, at least some of this might be in there. And if anybody wants to hear it, I'll be more than happy to read it.
Go for it, Marty, it doesn't look very long.
Okay, all right. "It's an open letter to potential candidates running for Prescott Valley Mayor and council seats. Dear candidates, I'd like to let you know what is expected of you as a council member. These are nonpartisan positions, and decisions you make should be based on what is best for the community using the information given in questions you ask. You should also know that each of you will be given assignments to committees that will take away time from your job and family. It is not just two or three hours a week on a Thursday night. It is not unusual to have to drive down to Phoenix or up to Flagstaff for an 8:00 a.m. meeting. There are also nighttime assignments. For example, I'm the liaison to the Fire Board and School Board. Those meetings are held in the late afternoon and evenings. Then there are the optional invitations you get to dinners and celebrations and ribbon cuttings. They all happen at all hours of the day and night. This information is being provided to you to let you know that there is a time commitment to being on the council. If you want to do the job correctly, you should have the time to be able to do it. Thank you for stepping up to serve. The community is a very rewarding experience."
Thanks, Marty. Councilman Packard, do you have anything?
Just one question, Diane. Is there a timeframe we have to fit? Do we have to have somebody in there in six weeks, two months?
No.
There is none, okay.
No. We're well within any schedule that would require that. Yeah, we're fine. It sounds like I have your direction now to go with proposal two in the elongated calendar I drew up, allowing for the weeks that you are not in council meetings, and I will move forward with that. I would like to add that council packets, applicant packets rather, will not be available until I have the formal acceptance of Mary Mallory's resignation, which will be next Thursday. So the packets for those applicants will be available then on the 29th.
And with those packets, you're going to have a set questions in there for the presentation? Is that what it's going to be?
Yes, and next week I will bring forth to you the questions that we're proposing that have been used in the past, as well as some other materials for you to review.
Okay, and that's what the applicants will be presenting on their first night?
Right.
Along with maybe perhaps a bio or something explaining about themselves?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, then I will, I will move forward with proposal two. Thank you for your direction.
No other questions on that? We'll move on to item five. Intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County Flood Control District for Sunset Lane Stormwater Management Improvements. Sir?
Mayor, council, good evening. I'd just like to give a brief recap on the Sunset Lane project. The initial IGA authorizing the partnership between the county and the town was approved in October of 2016. There were various funding sources, one of them being a $1.2 million commitment from the Flood Control District to be distributed over two fiscal years. $600,000 for last fiscal year and $600,000 for this fiscal year. Project didn't get started until May of this year, and to date, they have not started any storm drain installation. They've been mostly focused on sewer and water upgrades west of Starlight, which is what they're currently working on. They do anticipate starting storm drain next week, and so the IGA that you have before you is still for that $1.2 million commitment for this fiscal year. The unit bid prices came in at $1.18 million, so we do anticipate spending every cent. And I do want to thank Lynn Whitman, who's the director of the Flood Control District. Her and her staff are just super to work with. We have an excellent working relationship, and they're great partners, so I just want to throw that out there and thank her. I didn't really have any exhibits. I do have this one here, just to kind of show you the magnitude of some of the infrastructure that we do put in on our roadway projects. So this was taken about three weeks ago, and this is Spouse Drive, the Spouse Viewpoint project, and this is Spouse Drive looking west. And right here, you see dual 48-inch culverts being put in. This will be right, right where the roadway is going to be. And you can see, it takes up quite a bit of space. It's pretty substantial. For a good portion of Sunset Lane, we're actually going to, on the east side, we're actually going to have dual 54-inch pipes, so it's going to be even more, it's going to be even larger. And we're going to have a substantial box, concrete box culvert on the west side. So there's a lot of improvements there. So this is all I had to show you right now, but just kind of give you an idea. And that's pretty much it, in a nutshell. Do you have any questions?
I really don't, Ron, but I want to congratulate you, and I hope you have lots of aspirin, because boy, what a lot of headaches this is going to be. And I also want to compliment you for all the pre-meetings you had with the residents and how clear you were about how disruptive this was going to be and how you were going to all work together, because it will be very difficult for the residents, and I appreciate all the time that was spent, you know, giving them knowledge.
Thank you. That was really, you know, part of the challenge, was getting all of the easements that we needed, getting the buy-off from the residents, making them feel comfortable on what we're going to be doing, and also coordinating all the utilities. I mean, Unisource is still, they're still in the process of their relocate. They're on the east side. They've got two more intersections, and they'll be done, they anticipate probably the end of August, so they've really been working around the clock to try to get their stuff out of the way for us. So, you know, with all of the, you know, the four utilities, it really took a lot of coordination, you know, to get everybody on the same page. So, yeah, it's been relatively quiet, I think, to this point. We're two months into it, so, yeah, I'm feeling good about it.
I went over there yesterday just to see how it was all going, and it was so calm and orderly, and that's the good news.
Yeah, we anticipate probably another month, we're really going to, it's going to really ramp up once Unisource is out of the way. You know, and then asphalt paving really wants to come in full force with, you know, just quite a team to really, we're trying to, we're trying to really limit the impact. We're trying to do block to block, or maybe two blocks at a time. You know, and they've got to get the low infrastructure in first, and then their way, work their way up to where they can put, you know, a road base in, and then they want to move to the next section, be able to open that up so it can pass and then move to the next section. So it's kind of tricky, the way we're doing it. You know, as you get to the west side, it really gets crowded over there. Those homes in the county are buttoned right up. You know, we haven't gotten that far yet, but that's where we're really going to see some challenges, so it'll be interesting.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
That it?
That's it. Moving right along, we're on number six. Proposed revision to water and wastewater rates, fees, and charges.
Mr. Mayor, if I could for just a second, you've got Katie here, and she needs recognition, and that will be a press release that's coming out. They were just notified that they have again received high recognition from the GOFA, which is, Katie could give you the exact name of that group, but recognizing their effort for an outstanding budget and CAFR book. So hats off to Katie and her team.
You got to follow that now.
Yeah. Sorry to disappoint you.
You have good news. Don't say you're sorry.
This will be a good one, though. I think everyone will like this. So good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. This is our annual review that I'm summarizing up for the last six months for some of the newer faces. For me, Katie and I spend about half a year going over data and different input from different consumption numbers, projection numbers, moving into the future to the next fiscal year, with how we determine our water and sewer rates. It's a pretty intense study, and I will say, this is Katie's first year doing it as director, and the only word I can say is impressive, is what she's been as far as moving along, understanding this, and actually really kind of taking over. She's a pleasure to work for and with.
Would you say it was way better than Bill?
Well, he might be watching this.
Don't risk.
Yes. So the purpose that we do this for is to establish the base on our cost of service, our water and sewer rates. And the reason we do this is we need to maintain adequate financial performance measures based on those rates. We have bond requirements that we need to make for the bonds, and then also by town policy. And we also want to make sure that we are giving the most fair rate to our customers. So our current water structure is we have a monthly fixed charge that's based on the meter size, so 19,000 of our 21,000 customers on a residential 5/8 meter, that's the lowest cost base fee, and then that base fee does increase as the meter size increases, also based on the customer class. We have contractors, residential, commercial, multifamily, and so on and so forth. We do charge based on thousands of gallons. Some municipalities and companies do it by the gallon, tens of gallons, hundreds of gallons. We round down to the close, to the lowest 1,000 gallons. We do have a conservation structure that was introduced probably about 10 or 15 years ago. One of the John Mundelow sides of this is we have three different tiers, which basically is the more you use, the more you will end up paying, and those tiers are based on that meter size. So the smaller the meter, the more adequate it is for that conservation. Typically, our current rates, if you are a single-family resident and use 6,000 gallons a month, your water bill is going to calculate you $27.48 on the water side for your water consumption. It's the same thing on the sewer side. It's a fixed monthly charge, and that is based on the meter size and the customer class. Residents are established with a winter quarter average. It's a five-month average during the winter months that we measure the water that goes down the sewer. You know, this past year is a great example. There's two feet of snow outside. You're not watering your lilies out front or washing your car out in the middle of two feet of snow. That water's going for bathing, cooking, cleaning, your typical stuff is going to go down the drain. The town does a 90% average based on that five-month average, and that is an industry standard that we use to establish that sewer rate. And that is some, because we do not meter the sewer flow. I don't know many people even do nationwide or worldwide, but I don't think we want to start that. On the sewer side, a single-family resident has that 4,000-gallon winter quarter average. Their sewer side of the bill would be $20.23. So what do all these numbers that Katie and I crunched for six months, what does it do? So we look at our budget numbers, projected budget numbers, our debt services, so our bonds, and the cost that it takes for us to provide that water. We get that. Combine that with the projected gallons, so moving into the next fiscal year, we kind of have to put on our thinking caps and crystal balls and predict the weather for the next 12 months, so that's probably one of the more stressors in that process. And then put that in along with the number of customers that we have. And when we kind of mix all those together, we get that revenue requirement and divide that by the rate, and we're able to establish where our rate needs to be, or if it's good, where it's at. So some of the assumptions that we base that calculation on is the customer growth. Prescott Valley's growing right now, so we do have that customer base increase. Operating expenses are constantly increasing number. Our debt service, the big thing to point out, our annual debt service on the water side, moving forward, is at $0 per year. Just this fiscal year, we did pay off the remaining amount of our water bond, so that allowed us to take that, I believe it was about $1.8 million, and focus that onto more important projects with updating the water structures and preparing for that growth. Some of the financial systems based on those projections, our debt service coverage, as you can see, we were at a 1.93. Town policy dictates that we stay at a 1.6, so we were handsomely above that moving forward. Does not apply, so we are not using, factoring that into that calculation. So as a result, based on all those meetings and numbers that we came together with, we did have a small percentage decrease, but it is a less than 1%, actually less than a half percent decrease. So we do like to kind of balance itself within a 1% margin of error, plus or minus. If you remember, last year, we did call for a 1% increase, but because of that margin of error, we decided to go with a no increase. Looks like that was pretty spot-on. Even though we're asking for a less than half percent decrease, we want to keep that falling within that margin of error and keep the water rates as they are as of right now. So we're proposing, thumbs up, so we're proposing no change to the water rates. It's the same thing on the sewer side, 1% growth, operating expenses increasing annually. We do have, I believe it's two bonds with the sewer. Comes for $1.6 million a year that we're paying that bond back at. Same policies apply for that. We have to maintain that 1.6 bond coverage. Looking at that debt service, or that bond coverage, we are maintaining that. There are some capital projects in the next coming years that will make that kind of dip a little bit, but we are still staying where we need to stay. One thing to point out, if you look towards the bottom under the cash reserve ratios, I have 400% and 300%. We are keeping that high intentionally, because we are having several projects coming up in the next three to seven years, one of the major ones being the wastewater treatment plant expansion. So our intent is to basically cash fund that, where we would not have to take out an additional bond. So we're hoping that the more money we have to do that, it'll help us in the long run, along with our residents and customers. Very similar to the water, our percentage decrease did come out to less than a quarter percent on the sewer side, so falling into that same margin of error, we would like to propose that we keep the sewer rates the same as they are as of today. And with that...
Another thumbs up. But more importantly, we've all known that served for a while, that not that long out in the future, we're going to have to have a major expense out there, and just because of growth. And I want to thank you and your department for the quality of planning, because you're already planning for all of that, and that's critical thinking, and I just want to applaud you all.
It's not often in today's day and age where departments come before council and say, hey, we're not asking for any more money. Things are actually pretty good.
Pretty rare now.
It doesn't happen that often, so I thank you for that, and I know the citizens, thank you for that. Katie, thank you.
But even, but even more than that, it's the fact that when it's time for those big improvements to be done, we're not going to be asking the citizens for a lot of money because you've already prepared for that. So the impact to the citizens and their wallet is going to be minor, if anything. So thank you for that. I mean, that's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, just a technical question, yeah, and it's common assumption for both water, the assumption in the sewer, you said growth, customer growth 1%, that's 1% per year, per month, there's?
Over the next 12 months.
Say again?
Over the next 12 months.
12 months.
For this fiscal year, we are projecting a 1% growth in our customer base.
Okay.
All right, sir, thank you. Oh, Mr. Tarkowski.
Mr. Mayor and council, one thing that you could take a great deal of satisfaction in is that our revenue was down to the extreme the last six months. Okay, and why is that? Well, because we had El Nino here, and it was very wet. And so Katie would come in monthly, and we would sit down going through numbers, and she was sitting there wringing her hands, and it's like, you know, there's nothing you could do about that, okay, compared to the previous year. Compared to the previous year, if you remember two winters ago, it was dry from January all the way through till the end of the year. Very, very little rainfall in that drought year. This year being just the opposite. And so despite the fact that revenue was down significantly the last six months, we have reserves built up to go ahead and cover that. And so a very well-managed system, and hats off to them for not needing to look at a raise in rates.
Great, thank you again, sir. Moving on, the YMCA-specific site study. Sir Tarkowski, are you handling this?
Mayor and Council, you are aware that we have been working with YMCA for over 10 years, responding to requests from our citizens to go ahead and see what we could do to attract a YMCA to the area. It has been a longstanding desire expressed by people in this community. So to that end, back, actually, it was 16 years ago, I remember a presentation that was made to the Board of Directors of the YMCA in Prescott to go ahead and begin the process of exploring their expansion into our community. Well, shortly after that presentation was made, we ended up going into a recession, and all bets were off by all parties. And despite the fact that we'd had a number of meetings and even started some discussion about location, well, that laid fallow for about seven years. Just here, about three years ago, we engaged the YMCA again, and we actually moved forward with a joint project to do a feasibility study for the YMCA. They paid 50%, we paid 50% of that study that went forward to see if there was any desire, and was it feasible to have a YMCA? Are there enough people here to go ahead and do it? And it wasn't so much the number of people in Prescott Valley. One of the considerations was, how many people would the YMCA in Prescott lose because they're Prescott Valley residents? And they would come to the local Y. So there was an analysis that was done, and it came out very favorable citing a YMCA in Prescott Valley. The next step was to identify a site, number one, and then, number two, do a deeper dive with the residents of the community, i.e. survey. And this particular contract entirely on the town of Prescott Valley, and we're stepping up to the plate, because our citizens have been saying they want a Y. And so to that end, we have worked with a property owner who has identified an area and a willingness to work with the YMCA. There's a number of details that need to be worked out. But we're looking at a piece of property that's four acres adjacent to Bob Edwards Park here off of Viewpoint Drive, very close to Longwood Drive. And so with that in mind, the same consultant that is, that does a lot of work for the YMCA nationwide is engaged to begin the next step. With that particular site in mind, they will begin preparing surveys and going ahead and polling our citizens and looking deeper into the feasibility of building a Y in Prescott Valley. And Mayor, I know that you're familiar and have been in on some of these meetings, and if you have anything to add to that, it would be good.
I think it's exciting for the community and for council to be able to bring it forth, because I know how painful it must have been in the past to get so close and then have to pull the reins back. But just sitting in on those meetings and just recognizing the excitement from the YMCA people as well about how great Prescott Valley will be able to benefit from this, and I agree 100% on it, and whatever we can do as a council and a community to make this happen is important.
Yeah, their staff is excited, their board is even more engaged and excited about the possible expansion of service, so.
And on top of that, one last thing, just the location itself is a great, great location. It's going to be, the Y would be able to utilize the soccer field at Bob Edwards Park for numerous different activities that the Y already has. And props to the community partner that has stepped up to recognize that piece of property and be able to commit to us, so.
I just have a question. At this point in time, are they looking to have a swimming pool in this facility or not? Because I know that, I know we've had different discussions with people, and that could be a deal breaker.
Throughout the meetings, originally, there was some question as to whether that was going to occur or not, but by the conclusion of those meetings, it's been pretty unanimous that it was a full-fledged YMCA to have a pool, the weight room, everything you would see in Prescott, and even better out here in Prescott Valley. And then the size of this property would allow that to happen as well.
Well, that's really, that's really good to hear, so thank you.
I would just like to acknowledge the mayor. One of his goals that he shared before he was elected was a desire for this to happen. And I will tell you, having worked so closely with it before, heartbroken is the word. I mean, we were right there, and I want to thank you for reinvigorating it, and I bet this is the time. We're going to make it all the way.
Hopefully, we're close, and Mr. Tarkowski is the one getting props on this. He's the one who's been leading the way with initiating this and getting people riled up, so it's good.
That's just something that I would like to say, is thank you to all our predecessors who have worked on this. I know, being one of the newer members of our council, I feel like I get to ride on the shirt tails sometimes, and this is one of those moments, because that's probably the second most asked question that I get as a new council member, is when will we get a YMCA? So this is exciting to me. Thank you.
Anything else? With that being said, turn.